Okay. I'm going to call this meeting to order tonight on May 28th, 2019. Welcome, everyone. I hope you come back every meeting.[8.61][8.61](Laughter). We like it when you're in the room. This is awesome. This is what public engagement looks like. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. Tonight, we're going to get started with our city clerk calling the roll.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present.
And Commissioner Wilson, would you lead us in the invocation, please? Please stand.
Please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight first and foremost with a sense of gratitude and awe for the grace of your presence among us. May everything we think and do begin with your inspiration. On this day and every day, we seek your guidance for wisdom, thoughtful consideration, and the peace that passes understanding, possesses it. In the spirit of love and compassion, we ask for your blessing on each of us gathered here today. We thank you for all the many blessings that we have. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please take standing and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have one request for a deletion, be the introduction of an ordinance under 3B, amend human relations ordinance by Commissioner Abraham.
Thank you very much. All right. So first up tonight, we have a proclamation that I'm going to read first, and then we're going to have some guests, Krista Dubruck and Nancy Holm, come up and say a few words about this proclamation. Whereas every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year; and whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries; and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility; and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories; and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe; and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, on behalf of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, I, Mayor Brandy Harless, declare June 7th, 2019, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city and encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Thank you.[193.12][193.12](Applause). Thank you all so much, Mayor Harless and the commission. Nancy Holm is going to say a few words for us.
The color orange has a long and proud history in the gun safety movement. Orange is the color that Heidiya Pendleton's friends wore in her honor after she was shot and killed in Chicago at the age of 15. Whether it's worn by hunters in the woods of Pennsylvania, activists in New York City, or Heidiya's loved ones in Chicago, orange honors the hundreds of lives cut short and the hundreds more wounded by gun violence every day. And orange demands action. Since the first National Gun Violence Awareness Day in 2015, hundreds of communities and organizations continue to commemorate that event by wearing orange, holding community events, and issuing city and state proclamations like this one. Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America is a national organization dedicated to awareness and action regarding the epidemic of gun violence in our country. I'm ashamed to say that I was 57 years old before I realized it was time for me to speak up and share the impact gun violence has had in my family. On December 1st, 1997, my son, Holland, was in a prayer group at Heath High School. I was fortunate that he came home to me that day, injured by a bullet but still alive. It was something we didn't talk about very often. I thought it could never happen again, but then there was Columbine, Sandy Hook, Virginia Tech, Parkland, among so many others, and then to my horror, Marshall County. It was after Marshall County that Holland and I both realized that we had to speak out, that we had to acknowledge this epidemic while respecting the strongly-held beliefs of all people. It doesn't have to be a school shooting. It can be a suicide, a homicide, domestic violence, or a random shooting involving a firearm, but it's still gun violence. So that is why I'll be wearing this orange shirt on June 7th and again on June 8th at the downtown farmer's market as our Paducah Moms Group shares the message of this issue in our city. Thank you, Mayor Harless, for your proclamation and courage in publicly recognizing this issue.[367.11][367.11](Applause).
Up next, we have some special guests. We have our State Senator Danny Carroll and our State Representative, Randy Bridges. We're so happy. Let's give them a round of applause. They deserve that.[397.12][397.12](Applause). No, we are not doing that tonight. Whoever just did that can get out of the room if you're going to boo. Tonight, we are a community. We are here to respect one another.
I didn't say, no, I said go.
No, I didn't think it was you, ma'am.[413.12][413.12](Laughter). Hey, I know you. How you doing?[418.12][418.12](Laughter). All right. We're here to listen to a legislative update tonight.
Mayor, commissioners, city manager, and all the guests, it is good to be here tonight. And first and foremost, Moms Demand Action, I want to thank you all for what you do. There is always a large presence in Frankfurt, and though I am very much pro-gun, I'm also very much pro-common sense. And I did break with my caucus this past session with the Senate Bill 150 that did away with the training. And, you know, I do think that there are problems we need to address. I am in favor of gun ownership, but it needs to be responsible, it needs to be sharp where people are acutely aware of the laws and how to use a firearm. And I think that that piece of legislation was contrary to that, and I just don't think it was good policy. But thank you all so much for what you do, and appreciate that very much. It was an honor to be able to meet with the mayor and city manager this evening, and, you know, in our positions as state legislators, it's crucial that we maintain a good, close relationship with our local officials. We cannot help you if we don't know what's going on, and Commissioner Watkins is very acutely aware of that, and it was an honor serving with you for the four years that we served together, Commissioner, and honored to have your friendship, sir.
Thank you, same here. Feelings mutual.
We are aware of the struggles that the city faces. There are so many good things going on in our state right now. You look at, over the past three years, we've had 50,000 new jobs, and I know that number has been updated and has grown even greater than that. Over $18 billion in new capital investments planned, and then over $86.6 billion in exports, just to name a few statistics. Record unemployment in our state, the largest engaged workforce in the history of our state. So economically, there are some great things going on, and things that I'm very excited about. You only have to look, it seems like every month now, there's a major announcement being made in our state somewhere in relation to a lot of jobs coming, and these are good-paying jobs. And I am convinced that within the next year, we're going to see that happen in this community. And the struggles that we have, and we talk about all the great things that are happening with economic development in the state, yet there's one thing that's holding this state back, and that's our pension crisis. And you all are aware, we're looking at anywhere from a $40 to $60 billion unfunded liability, depending on what assumptions you use to calculate the figures. And I am convinced, last budget cycle, we put in an extra billion dollars into the pension systems. We can't continue to do that every budget cycle from here on out, because if we do that, we are going to hurt in the areas that we need to invest in, the infrastructure in our state, education, marketing our state, our job force development, all the things that we need to keep our economy growing, to keep it moving, that's where we need to make sure that we make investments, because as I told the mayor earlier, I am convinced, and you will hear the governor say this often, that is our way out. As our economy grows, as jobs grow, we're going to see people moving in from other states to make Kentucky their home, and in return, we're going to see revenue grow in our state, and that's revenue that we can put towards the pension crisis, that we can develop towards infrastructure and all the other things that we need to be doing to make our state stronger. I think there are bright days ahead for our state, and the numbers bear that out. We will get through these problems. I expect that we will have a special session before July 1st to deal with the quasi-pension issue that weighs heavily on a lot of folks in our community who provide some very essential services. So we are hoping to get that done so we can provide at least some temporary relief for them while there is a plan put in place to help them to be able to sustain. And the mayor, the city manager, has spelled out very clearly the struggles that the city of Paducah will face as a result of increased pension contributions, and we are very well aware of that in Frankfurt and the struggles. And, you know, there is concern, the changes that we make, how it's going to impact cities throughout the state, and how many cities, counties are going to be able to survive. So it is a no-win situation, and it is a huge crisis. And I think at this point that the people, the public, are taking it seriously, and they realize it is something that we must deal with, and we will deal with it. It's not going to be perfect, it's not going to be a short-term solution. We are looking at 30 years' worth of investment. But the key to all that is that we make sure first and foremost that we do not leave this for the generations that follow to deal with. That's been happening in the past, and I think we are, as a priority, to ensure that that doesn't happen, and that we do put a plan in place to address this issue, and then we can focus on the things that we need to focus on with education and all the services that are needed throughout our state. And so, just in summary, a lot of struggles ahead, a lot of tough decisions, but I don't think anyone can deny that there is a bright future for this Commonwealth, and we're going to see our state continue to thrive and grow, and jobs are going to become more available, good-paying jobs. And I think right here in Paducah, in this region, we are set for an economic boom. We are, and I say this all the time, we are right in the center of a global economy now. You're seeing investment from countries all over this world. We're going to see more of that in the future. So the global economy is here in western Kentucky, and I'm very excited about that, and I think it's going to be good for our public and our quality of life, which is so important, and families being able to support themselves and be able to thrive and provide for their families. We're going to see families better able to do that, and I am very excited about that and looking forward to the future and what it holds. And my pledge to you all is to continue to work with you and to listen to you as a group and on an individual basis on what your concerns are, and I appreciate all your input. It really does help us to understand the decisions that we're making when we understand exactly how it impacts our local jurisdiction and our local government. So a great working relationship, and I thank you all so much for that, and look forward to working with you for the next three years at least.
Before you get out of here, Senator, I just got to say that I appreciate your good common-sense leadership in Frankfurt. You're a star up there. You get a lot of things done, and you're highly respected on both sides of the aisle, and we worked together many times in getting several pieces of very important legislation passed. I appreciate my working relationship and my friendship with Senator Danny Carroll. I think you're doing a great job. Appreciate the job you do for us and the leadership you provide in Frankfurt. Appreciate you being here tonight.
As mutual. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor and city commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. This is my first term in office and spent some time getting my feet on the ground. I appreciate Gerald and his leadership and his guidance. As I started to get my feet on the ground, he helped a lot. We had a few phone calls, and Gerald, I appreciate your willingness to share your wisdom with me.
Yes, sir.
Danny's pretty well-covered everything. I think the top priority this upcoming session, the previous session, is economic development. If we can get our fiscal house in order, I think all the other problems will tend to go to the wayside. But appreciate Jim and Mayor for meeting with Danny and I earlier. I think this is the second time we've met in the matter of a few months, and we do understand the crisis that's at hand, and I believe you do, too. I think what is sad is we see the bad stuff out there on some things, but we never see the bottom line behind the curtain, and I've been able to do that this first session, and it's amazing to see all the good things going on. And Kentucky is positioned, and I think in the most positive way for the future growth and above many, many, many other states. I've attended a few of the conferences with other legislators from other states, and I can tell you, it's impressive what's going on here right in our home state, but unfortunately, a lot of times that doesn't get out there, and you don't get to see that. But as Danny said, you know, we've got record unemployment, we've got job participation at all-time rate high for our state, we're still under the national average, but it's climbing daily, literally daily. Our exports are at an all-time record. We've got a lot of good things going on, and if we can get our fiscal house in order, then we will be, there's much brighter days ahead to come. I don't want to repeat everything Danny said. I can echo it, ditto it, whatever, but I do owe him a world of appreciation for his first four years. I had the privilege to serve as the state political coordinator to Senator Carroll for the state Realtors, and the experience that I gained during that was just invaluable. And Danny, I appreciate that. I don't get to tell you that many often, but you are in good hands with your senator. My wife might say different for your state representative sometimes, but I think we've got some bright days ahead. There's a lot of positive things going on, and while it may seem doom and gloom on the outside, I can assure you that Kentucky has got the game plan to move forward and move forward in a strong way. And I'm excited because western Kentucky, Paducah, is being heard from Frankfurt. I mean, when you're a freshman leader and you get calls from House leadership, you get calls from the Senate saying, "What do y'all think down there?" That is new, and that's no disgrace to Gerald at all. You know, we've talked about that, but with the way the climate has changed in Frankfurt, we've got a voice that we haven't had in a long, long time, possibly never have, and your voice can be heard. All we need to do, I want to encourage you, to reach out to us and let us know what you need, and we'll go to bat for you. You have my 100% commitment for you. I appreciate the meeting prior with the mayor and the city manager. The information you give us is invaluable. It helps us know how to better do our job up there, what to ask for, what to work for, and all I can do is echo Danny's excitement on what the future holds for us, and seeing behind-the-scenes, you know, things that we don't always have the liberty to discuss and talk about publicly, there's a lot of good things going on, and things are starting to click. So I just want to thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you.
Awesome.
I would like to say thank you, Randy, Representative Bridges, for your kind words, and I was honored to work with you, and you work really hard, and you're providing some strong leadership in Frankfurt, so we appreciate it down here.
Well, I just want to say, Senator Carroll and Representative Bridges, thank you for your willingness to serve. I know, it's not a short trip to Frankfurt, and it takes away a lot of time from your family and your own businesses, so thank you for your willingness to serve. You know, I'm not shy about reaching out to you. When I want you to know about something, I'm going to let you know, and I appreciate your response to me and your response to listening to the community. I appreciate you reaching out and working with our community when we're in Frankfurt, too, so thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Honestly, this is the first time I remember this kind of exchange in several years, so thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate you being here.[1182.21][1182.21](Applause). And I know that you both have other obligations, so have a good evening, and thank you all so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Cindy Toon, haven't had a chance to see Cindy. Did she make it tonight?
There she is.
Is she coming around the corner?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there you are. You're all the way back there. All right. She's going to share with us about the VFW Family Freedom Festival coming up.
This is my first time talking, so thank you for letting me be here tonight. Hi, my name is Cindy Toon. I'm part of the Veterans of Foreign War Auxiliary Post 1191 here in Paducah at 1727 Washington Street. This is my second year of doing a Family Freedom Festival, and what it is about is way our veterans and military in our community can unite together. It's our way of giving back to our community. It's kind of like a carnival that we have with games for the kids and free food, and we have prize drawings and giveaways. We had a blast last year. The mayor was there, and thank you for coming, and thank you for letting me talk tonight. We also focus on one issue each year, and this year, I'm focusing on mental illness, not just for our veterans, but also for our community. So far, I have gotten Four Rivers and the Zone coming, and hopefully, the VA Clinic will be here, too. And anybody else that would like to join us and participate, you can come and set up a booth with information, or you can set up a game to play with the kids, or you can just come and join us for all the fun that we have down there. It was a blast last year. The fire department was there, I got soaked.[1295.33][1295.33](Laughter). They didn't focus on anybody but me, so I was soaked to the bone.
When is it? What's the date again?
Sorry. It is June 29th from 12:00 to 4:00. It's on a Saturday. I have flyers and media information papers over here on the desk, so y'all are welcome to pick up what you need at the table.
Excellent.
And I think that's it.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions for Cindy?
No.
Thank you for organizing.
Thank you for your work. And if you do have any other questions or you want to join on the media paper, my name's at the top with my cell number, so feel free to contact me, and I'll get together with you.
Excellent.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Cindy.
You have a nice evening.
Thank you.[1345.33][1345.33](Applause). All right. We were told that the Channel 11 stream isn't working. I think the video is on, so I don't know sign language for those people on TV here watching right now to tell them we're working on it. So if you've been hearing about it, tell them we're working on it, so we'll be hearing soon. All right. So we're going to move into our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, and I do think there is one that Commissioner Wilson would like to remove tonight.
Yes, item E, with the short-form agreement with HDR Engineering for further discussion.
Excellent. Anyone else have anything they'd like to remove? No? Okay. With that, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval.
Minutes for the May 14th and 15th, 2019 city commission meetings, receiving and filing documents, personnel actions, appointment of Glenn Denton jointly with the McCracken County Fiscal Court to the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau to replace Glenn Anderson, who has resigned. This term shall expire December 31st, 2020. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, K.O.H.S., for funds in the amount of $97,000 for an airport terminal access control system for the Barclay Regional Airport to execute the Kentucky procurement policy and all other documents which are deemed necessary by K.O.H.S. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, K.O.H.S., for funds in the amount of $350,000 for an EOD robot for the Paducah Police Department's FBI-certified bomb squad to execute the Kentucky procurement policy and all other documents which are deemed necessary by K.O.H.S. A municipal order setting the 800 megahertz radio system customer-user unit rates for the city and non-city users. A municipal order authorizing the purchase of Microsoft Exchange 2019 and Microsoft Office 2019 from S.H.I. Incorporated in an amount of $87,938.92, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And would you read the motion for the item E, please?
A municipal order authorizing and approving a short-form agreement between the city of Paducah and HDR Engineering Incorporated in an amount of $65,200 for professional services related to grant writing, benefit cost analysis, and environmental assessment for the FY19 Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development Build Grant Application.
So moved?
The reason I asked...
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
There you go. You're ready.
Well, the reason I asked for this to be pulled is I wanted us to have the opportunity to just briefly talk about it. We've heard a lot about economic development tonight. I look at this as a great movement toward the potential for economic development. The federal government last year introduced the Build Grant Program, which we did apply for. It was very, very competitive. We didn't make the first, well, we got reviewed, and we moved way up, but we didn't get awarded a Build Grant. I feel like that after the meetings that we've had with the Department of Transportation this year, we now better understand everything that we should apply for, what could be in there and what wouldn't need to be in there, and HDR Engineering has a reputation of applying for build grants and preparing applications in the way that they know the Department of Transportation will look at them and accept them. So I just think it makes us more competitive to have HDR Engineering helping us with that. I appreciate the city planning department and the grants department, and I know that they'll be working very closely with them, but this is an opportunity that we shouldn't pass up, and even if we don't get the Build Grant, we would be so much further down the road for any other potential federal or state funding that might come along that would help us with the riverfront development. It is more than just riverfront. I think it's more some downtown, but it is all related to transportation. So Jim, did you plan on Tamra briefly talking about it?
Thank you, members of the commission. I just wanted to briefly explain to you, as well as the viewing audience, exactly what we're going to be applying for. We are applying for this particular grant round with HDR for the construction of the Riverport's container transfer yard, and we are also applying for the construction of the Paducah landing improvements at the transient dock that are associated with that dock that we already have in place. And we are also applying for construction of our riverboat excursion pier and plaza area. And then to bring them all together, part of our ask for the Build Grant is the construction of critical infrastructure linkages that include bike and pedestrian linkages and broadband trunk extension linkages. And all of this will set us up to create a most fabulous riverfront experience for guests and our citizenry.
Great.
Thank you.
You got a round of applause for that one.
It's a great project.
Way to go.
Tamra, how much money are we trying to get?
Well, we're roughly...
Approximately, I know.
It'll probably be a little less than $17 million. We anticipate it being an 80/20 match with the federal government paying for 80% of the project.
It's one of these deals where we send our money to Washington, and we're trying to beg to get it back here?
Exactly.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Well, we don't have to actually send the money, we just have to have it planned.
No, we're sending it in our taxes.[1708.11][1708.11](Laughter).
Our tax dollars.
You already sent it, April 15th.
Yes. We just get it our own, though we are putting our own money aside that would help match it, so it's a great opportunity. Thanks for the applause on that part.
It's called leveraging.
Yeah, let's leverage it. It's going to be very, very competitive, but we got to try.
Thank you, all. Thank you, Melanie, for your work. I really appreciate it. Any other questions or comments about the Build Grant? All right. You ready to move on to roll call? Okay.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a resolution for the Civic Beautification Board. I move that a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Supporting the Civic Beautification Board's Fundraising Efforts for the Restoration of the Fountain Feature in the Paducah City Hall be adopted."
Second.
We got to figure that one out. Thank you so much. Any comment? I know that Tamra's been working on this with the Civic Beautification Board. There is, as you leave tonight in your newly restored city hall atrium, you will see a fountain down at the bottom of the atrium, and it actually is, used to be a working fountain that had real water coming out of it. Unfortunately, we did not budget for the restoration of that fountain during our rehab, but the Civic Beautification Board is committed to making sure that we have a water feature in the middle of the building, so if you're interested in donating, I So if you're interested in donating, I guess call Tamara, and we'll connect you to Civic Beautification Board. Yes, absolutely. You got a lot of people tonight that might want to be donors, you know? It's a good night. All right, so with that, let's call roll.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
All right, so we're going to move into, the reason I really think you're here, not from all the great things, but maybe you got a little taste of a City Commission meeting tonight. It's not that boring, right? We have some interesting things going on. So thank you all so much for being here. We are going to do a little bit of a different order than we typically do with commission meetings because we do know you're here with this many public comments to make about a very specific thing. So what we're going to do is move the public comment section up into this part of the meeting. I do want to lay a few ground rules for you because we are such an amazing community that cares about each other. If you use curse words or name call, I will shut you down immediately and ask you to leave. So tonight, we're here to be respectful and care about each other. We know at this commission that we can disagree and still care about one another, so we're asking you to do the same, and I know you will. We will give everyone three minutes. I think there is a timer. This is a new feature, so there will be a timer up on the screen, so talk really fast towards the end, you know, if you run out of time, like an auctioneer, so I hope you practiced. And with that, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start from the top of my stack. I'm pretty certain we did this from the first people to come in and place them to the last. And I will call your name and ask you to come up, and the timer will start when Lindsay says it does, all right? Any other ground rules for this tonight? I am going to go ahead and make a motion, since we only have one amendment tonight and not two, I'm going to go ahead and put it on the table, make the motion, and get a second from someone, I hope.
Second. My bill, I got a second.
And that way, we'll have it on the table, and we can vote immediately after, okay? All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 58 Human Relations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah." The ordinance is summarized as follows. The ordinance amends the Human Relations chapter of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to include the following as Section 58-133. It is the intent of the City Commission that all sections of this ordinance shall be interpreted in a manner consistent with KRS 446.350, which provides as follows. Government shall not substantially burden a person's freedom of religion. The right to act in a manner motivated by a sincerely held religious belief may not be substantially burdened unless the government proves by clear and convincing evidence that it has a compelling government interest in infringing the specific act or refusal to act, and has used the least restrictive means to further that interest. A burden shall include indirect burdens such as withholding benefits, assessing penalties, or an exclusion from programs or access to facilities.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we have Landi Bryant, first up of Paducah. Everyone's going to get a round of applause.
I will try to enunciate. Don't start the timer yet.
Oh.
Well, here I go, sorry. In a world where the mere existence, necessity of a fairness ordinance makes me cringe, it was a win for a marginalized LGBTQ community in January 2018. Now, by moving backwards due to the political aspirations of one city commissioner, how can we intend to grow our population, jobs, diversity, our economy? There are wealth of reasons a person might settle in a certain geographical area. Larger cities may be more progressive. They might have more opportunity. The quality of life may be richer. Certain communities may be more opposed to a person being stifled.
You have plenty of time now. We don't have a timer on anymore. Take your time.
Thank you. Were you understanding me, though?
Yes, I'm doing good.
All right. By an archaic way of thinking, what is happening right now tells me we do not wish for Paducah to grow to be inclusive. Really think about this. This amendment, which I know is different now, but I wrote this before we knew this was going to happen, proposed to deny services to a person based on a vague and impossible-to-interpret concept. How do we define one's sincerely held religious beliefs? The word sincere implies that someone is being genuine, but the qualifier for that exists only in the individual's mind. Who are we, who or what is the final determining factor that this will be successfully implemented, and why are we still debating it? Deeply held religious beliefs are wholly subjective. Our laws cannot prohibit another strongly held convictions, only his actions. This is why separation of church and state is fundamental to our functioning politely. You may practice an absence of empathy or lack of appreciation for the choices of others in your daily life. You may embrace it or gather with like-minded folks, but you don't have the right to refuse services to someone based on who they love. These are educators, our city employees, our neighbors, our friends, our community. The origins of this debate have now transitioned into a larger issue we cannot ignore. A representative from the Commonwealth Policy Center, a Frankfurt nonprofit, traveled to our community to spread an obviously poorly researched message of exclusion. I'm still curious if he was invited by a city commissioner or came of his own volition. After a quick Google search, he came upon two examples of how Paducah has become excessively more gay-friendly since the passing of the Fairness Ordinance. He proceeded to claim that the signal was sent out across not just Kentucky, but across the country, that this is an LGBT-friendly city in a negative way. Heart USA, a nonprofit raising money to provide life-saving medications for those who cannot afford them. He also mentioned Maiden Alley Cinema, the region's only 501(c)(3) nonprofit cinematic art house, of which I'm the executive director, with a mission of creating a cross-cultural awareness, expanding visual literacy, and promoting filmmaking as an art form all year long. Films, music, and art do not discriminate, therefore neither do we. We educate, we entertain, we host live music, educational outreach events, partner with other nonprofits, showcase newly released independent films, and have monthly film series such as Faith in Film and Movies for Me. Because our nonprofit serves everyone, offering a view into new ways of thinking, giving people options of varied content that serve our entire community to the best of our ability all year long. Cinema Sisters is in its fourth year, so it predated the Fairness Ordinance, and coincidentally, no one is forced to attend. In fact, over 200 visitors from across the globe, mostly lesbians, came to Paducah for a long weekend and spent their dollars at businesses that do not deny them service and in fact welcome the people along with their revenue. Paducah would not be on the national stage... I'm almost done, I'm sorry. Paducah would not be on the national stage if we refuse to challenge each other or attempt to view things from another perspective. And while all may not understand or support the fact that we garner national recognition due to our arts and culture, it must be stated that it has a huge economic impact to all citizens and enriches the quality of life in Paducah and the surrounding region. We cannot afford to alienate any segment of our beautifully diverse and culturally rich community or make others feel that they aren't welcome. Who wants to be a part of that message? Ways of thinking must adapt. Just because it is the way it was does not mean it is the way it should be. I choose love. I hope Paducah does as well. And I will leave you with this. If someone is being kind to you and wants to spend money supporting your business, think about allowing them to do so. If you ever had to deny someone, I'm curious to ask the question, how did it make you feel to treat someone as less than human? And in a world where the notion held in this ordinance amendment exists inevitably leading to the moment a store owner's decision to deny services is made public, what do you think will happen? The store owner will find many who will boycott and will then be right here back, ugh, sorry, I was doing so good, right back here complaining about the unfair discrimination that we are suffering. We must be better than this. We cannot be so arrogant in our methods to truly believe at this point in history it is okay to discriminate against someone due to sexual orientation, using religion as a guise to perpetuate intolerance. We are adults, we can choose to think differently. Thank you.
If you could, when you come up to speak, just don't touch this.
It'll mess everything up. Thank you.
This is us entering into the 21st century. We got to slow walk it. We got to slow walk into the 21st century. All right, next up, what is that noise?
It's her beeper.
Oh, okay. There you go. Oh, my goodness. Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. All right. Next up is Stephen James of Paducah. We think you really have three amendments. We think, as long as it doesn't go off.
Well, I got transcript if I happen to not get past it all.
Perfect, all right.
But this is for the commissioners and the mayor. I would like to start out by thanking the city for allowing me to speak and for passing the Fairness Ordinance last year. I had reservations about a religious exemption amendment being added to this ordinance. Here is the hypothetical. We are motioning for this in protection for someone who holds a sincerely held religious belief, specifically against the LGBT community. I would like to ask, how do we judge someone's sincerely held religious belief? Does a person really hold that belief, or are they just using it as an excuse to not have, to hire someone or keep someone from renting from them just as examples? Where do we draw the line on sincerely held religious beliefs? Does it stop with just LGBT community? Or will that eventually expand to other ideals, such as someone that is not in a relationship bound by marriage with kids that they had outside of wedlock? If someone comes to your store and you have no idea that they are gay, or lesbian, or bi, or trans, but then after six months of working for you, proving to be one of your best employees, you find out that they are, are you really going to fire them? As a Christian, do you really think that Christ would do that? You see, when I was young and being brought up in the church, I was taught as Christians, we should be Christ-like. So I leave you with this thought and example. Mark 2:13-17. Then Jesus went again to walk alongside the lake. Again, a crowd came to him, and he taught them. Strolling along, he saw Levi, son of Alpheus, at his work collecting taxes. Jesus said, "Come along with me." He came. Later, Jesus and his disciples were at a home, having supper with a collection of disreputable The Pharisees said, "What kind of example is this, acting cozy with the riffraff?" Jesus overhearing shot back, "Who needs a doctor, the healthy or the sick? I'm here inviting the sin sick, not the spiritually fit."
Thank you. Yvonne Gray of Paducah.
Hi, thank you for letting me be here and speaking. On behalf of this ordinance, I would like to say...
Hold the microphone down just a little bit, thank you.
I'm not tall enough. One of the things I've noticed, whenever someone comes up with an ordinance, it burdens somebody else. I'm going to say this, one of the things that I substantially burdens, it shall not substantially burden. When you put a modifier in there, it does take away from shall not. I have lived a long life. I'm thankful for the Lord to give me that life, but I have had a discrimination. I've been told that I cannot speak in college campuses because of religious reasons. You cannot talk about what you talk about. You cannot write your paper the way you do. I've been mocked. I've been ridiculed. I've been told to sit down because of my Christian faith. I have been told to not, you cannot be a part of the parade, of Parks' parade, because your organization is separate, should be separate from the religion, from church and state. I hear that all the time. I grew up before they had Title X. Now, the Title X is kind of being destroyed because of the transgender movement. There's a girl in the New England States who was a track star, who was going to compete for college tuitions and things like that. She can no longer go into that college for the scholarships that she would have won because two transgender young men decided that they were going to be that time in that competition, and they took first and second. Now, if they just took the scores of the girls who were in the race, they both broke records for that school. We need an ordinance that truly sets aside the freedom, excuse me, and codifies it for religious freedom. And I'll tell you this right now, the religious freedom is being slowly chipped away in America because of our stance of traditional religion. I don't hear young people in high school being, tearing down a young person for his coming out as a hero. They're lionized. But if a child says he wants to pray in school or bow his head, he is told that he can't do it, he's taking the principal, or she's taking the principal? This has happened in America already. You have whittled away at the First Amendment to the point in law.
Thank you, Yvonne. Sorry, I have to cut you off because I got to be fair to everyone.
Well...
Thank you for being here. We really appreciate it.
I do want to say one thing.
I got to move on, Yvonne. I have to, I'm sorry. I have to be fair. Thank you for being here.
Please pass the ordinance.
I appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Dawn Joyce of Powers Road.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just am going to be brief and simple. I would just like to really ask that you please rescind the Fairness Ordinance, specifically remove the sexual orientation and gender identity from the Civil Rights Code. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dawn. Robert Strong of Whipper Will Lane.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I, Mayor Commissioners, I ask you to rescind the Fairness Ordinance, as well as I trust that even this amendment, especially for the businessmen and women that's endeavoring to operate an honest business, will always be treated fairly and be able to do that according to their beliefs and values. Thank you.
Thank you. Curtis Grace of Paducah.
Hi. My name is Curtis Grace. I'm an elderly gay man. I came out 45 years ago, so I've been fighting this fight for a long time. I lived most of my life away from here, probably for some of these same reasons. I left pretty young. I came back a few years ago to take care of an elderly mother who has since passed away. I just wanted to give you a little insight into my life as an elderly gay man. I work. I was fortunate that my parents accepted me for who I was. I know of my generation, I came out in 1972. It's a long time ago. A lot of people were not respected, were thrown out of their homes. I moved to a larger community, Lexington, which is a very progressive community. I had my own business for 27 years. I was never disrespected. I worked for the University of Kentucky, providing services for them for 25 years. I worked for high-end clients, corporate clients. My life is like everyone else's life. I hold two jobs. I volunteer. I freelance. I have a partner. We go out every once in a while. We like to travel. My freelance is really, and my freelance and my volunteer work is what I really wanted to talk about. I freelance for a woman in Lexington. I've worked for her for several years. She does very high-end work. She and her family are Mormon. We have a very respected relationship. We, excuse me, we get into some very interesting discussions, and I feel that we have both grown from that. I'm very close to her, her husband, and her family. My volunteer work, I volunteered since I've been back here for Catholic charities. I'm not a Catholic. I don't follow the Catholic religion, but I have to say that it is the most important thing for me that I do here. I'm very well-respected. I'm loved by the people that work there. We pray together every morning. It doesn't matter what my beliefs are. It feels good to me, and I feel that the people that are important to me, be they friends, associates... friends, associates, clergymen, respect me. And that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Mary Byrne of North Sixth Street.
I thought I'd better write it out. I have a suggestion, but before I get to that, I would like to state that I don't believe that Paducah needs to make a point that people can discriminate on the basis of religion. The state already makes that legal, so by passing the amendment tonight seems to be purely political, a slap in the face for many Paducans and a complete wedge issue that's not needed. But I have a suggestion if you feel like you have to pass the amendment. I would like to propose that you add some wording that would make it more equitable. As it is worded now, I see two problems. One is, how's a non-LGBT person to know which person coming into their establishment is gay or lesbian, trans or bi? And the other problem that I see is that as a lesbian, I don't want to give my money to someone who would discriminate against me. So I would like to propose... You're taking my time. I would like to propose that there is something in the amendment that tells businesses who want to discriminate that they need to first put a sign on their front door or their window that says something like, "Please, no gays." This would solve the two situations. For the first problem, even I, who have lived, worked, and played around LGBT people for over 40 years, can only tell about 40% of the people who are in our tribe. Seems to me about 60% of LGBT people do what we call "pass," or, in other words, are stealth gays. So a sign like that on the door would eliminate the possibility of a businessperson having to serve people they really don't want to. And then on the other hand, it would also provide some equity, because then I could decide whether I wanted to go into a store or business and give them my money. Because I can't always tell who are the stealth religious people who would discriminate against me. So it would be totally unfair to allow somebody to discriminate against me if I couldn't decide to give them my money or not. So let's put it all above board and have religious businesspeople make a conscious decision to discriminate before the fact and put the sign on their door or window. Also, the licensing and permits office at the City Hall could have a supply of the stickers for businesspeople to pick up, and since the city has a budgetary problem, maybe the commissioners who vote for the amendment could donate them. Thank you.
10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4. Thank you very much. All right. Guys, you've got to show up and do that for other things too in the city that we're doing. I feel like we need this enthusiasm. All right. Up next is Richard Nelson of Cadiz, Kentucky. Don't forget the respect game that we're playing tonight, everyone, so we're going to give everyone equal time.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Harless. I appreciate that. Appreciate you proposing this ordinance and also for your comments in the beginning about both sides respecting one another. That's important. I think it's great that we can have a discussion like this and share our ideas in public in front of the City Commission. I want to thank you all for serving here. Again, thank you for this dialogue we're able to have. I appreciate this amendment that's been proposed. I think it's a good thing and helpful to those who try to do their jobs according to their religious convictions. I believe it's also in line with the U.S. Supreme Court ruling that was issued last summer that upheld Jack Phillips' First Amendment rights to freedom of speech. A statewide fairness law was used in Colorado to suppress his religious freedom. The court, of course, upheld his religious freedom rights and actually chastised the state's Civil Rights Commission. My concern for this ordinance is how it is used to bully and intimidate and fine businesses that try to, the business owners try to run their business according to their convictions. Of course, in Lexington, Blaine Adamson, a graphic designer, was ordered to undergo diversity training because he refused to fulfill a T-shirt order that promoted a gay pride event that he disagreed with. This case is now before the state Supreme Court. Last week, one thing I wanted to say, it's not directly related to this, but I spoke at a meeting at First Baptist Church. My talk was secretly recorded and then posted on the Internet, and some people have seen it, apparently. But one of my comments was conflated by some as criticism of the event sponsored by Heart USA, which is an organization that seeks to assist needy people with expensive medicine. My comments were not against Heart USA. In fact, I appreciate the good work that they're doing to help the needy. I did not intend to portray them in any way that would criticize their overall work. My comments were opposed to drag shows in principle. I believe that every human being has inherent dignity and deserves respect because we're all made in the image of God. As an organization, we're also for the religious freedom of community members. I think one thing that needs to be clear, and that might be really helpful to this conversation, is just because I have a different opinion and CPC has a different opinion on the issue of human sexuality and on the definition of marriage, doesn't mean that we hate those on the other side. It simply means that we have a different opinion. I believe that if Paducah is working towards true fairness, and I think it is, I think this is a goodwill effort to move in that direction, that it should include religious freedom protections for business owners and other community members. I believe that this amendment is a step in the right direction and will help to uphold the religious liberty for this community. I'm for fairness, but I'm for true fairness for all people. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Norma Van Landingham from Paducah. I think I got it close, right? Did I get it almost, the last name?
That's exactly how it's been.
Oh, right.
Yes, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to speak. I just wanted to say that I just really don't think that our community needs this and that we should understand that God doesn't change and His laws doesn't change. And this is against a bunch of people's... They have to answer the day of judgment, and they have to stand before God and explain why they condoned something that He spoke against. But, you know, I just say that I'm against the act, so...
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Barney McNeil of Paducah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Commission. I think it's a great idea of letting everyone speak. I think a lot of communities probably would do that. But I come representing the West Kentucky Christian Alliance. We do a lot of events outside. We believe in straight ministry. I think we're the only one of the ones that did something yesterday, Christian-wise, so we try to do a lot of things. Mr. Richard Abraham, we appreciate Mr. Richard. He comes to a lot of our events, and I want to thank you, Richard, for the things you do. Contrary to what some people are saying, as far as Richard Nelson of CPC, I love what he's doing. When we started our West Kentucky Christian Alliance several years ago, he came and spoke at several of our events. So as a Christian, all I want to mention is just, let's just mention the elephant in the room here, okay? I've come to several of these meetings, and I understand it's outnumbered on one side. I came to the group about the racial issue. It seemed to be heavily. But now, from a Christian standpoint, I hope you all understand, Christians love more than anybody. I hope you all understand that.
Mayor.
Okay, I'm just telling what I think, all right? Christianity is a religion of love. God is love. We started out with, well, earlier today, saying, "We pledge allegiance to the flag, one nation under God." Now, this country was formed on Christian principles. I don't know if you all agree with that, but I believe it was, okay? But we love everybody. We're not against anybody. The only reason, only reason that we are against this furnace ordinance and some other things is that the Bible speaks against some things, simply. If I wasn't a Christian, I wouldn't be up here, okay? Because I believe, I believe everybody, I know a lot of the LGBT people. I love everybody. Christians ought to, okay? They should. But we're only speaking up because of the Bible says something's wrong. Otherwise, we wouldn't be saying a thing. But now, the only other thing I want to mention is that I think it needs to be said, is that we Christians are a little concerned about what's going on. At first, our country, our country, I believe, is getting very liberal in a lot of ways. I see...
Hey, uh-uh. Nope, nope. Guys, please, everyone's going to get their time respectfully.
I see, I see Paducah, I hate to say this, that's why I love you, Richard, I see Paducah starting to go down that path a little bit. Christianity is a conservative-type group, okay? Conservative. I see a lot of things going on that's starting to go away from that conservatism. So anyway, I just encourage, I encourage, encourage all of you, all of you all there to think about that. I know all of you, a lot of you all profess to be Christians, I hope you are. If you are Christian, Christianity is a conservative religion, okay? And we love everybody. We love everybody, okay? Not against anybody. We're only saying this because we think the Bible says no, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Jennifer Smith of Paducah is up next. As you guys can imagine, I'm trying my best to be the fairest possible way I can do this, okay? So just please, let people speak. If you want to clap afterwards, that's perfect, but make it a little easier on me, okay? Okay. Thank you.
I stand before you today totally dismayed that once again we're having this discussion. The majority of Americans support the LGBTQ community, and no matter how much some of you may want to go back to the 1950s, we're not going back. I am not gay. I'm an ally. My best friend is an African-American gay man, a Christian with AIDS, who is a national advocate for the community. William is the family I choose for myself. The majority of the people in the community, I'm not making a choice. They're born this way. But some of you are making the choice to discriminate and spread hate. You claim that you're being discriminated against, but call me confused. You can practice your religion freely in your churches and in your homes. Have your white, far-right, conservative churches been targeted by acts of violence and hatred? No. That would be the Jewish, Muslim, and African-American churches. If you want to know why our youth are leaving our area, look no further than this type of attempt to legislate morality. Educated people have had their minds opened. My own daughter and son will not return to Paducah because of this mentality. My daughter would rather live in South Korea than return to an America that legislates with the Bible and discriminates against disenfranchised communities. The quote on her Facebook page states, "Travel is fatal to prejudice, bigotry, and narrow-mindedness." Many businesses will feel the same. You claim to be pro-life, but ignore the fact that your attitude and message contribute to the high suicide rate among young LGBTQ children. They are also God's children, but your message rejects them and causes them to believe that they will never fit in and be accepted, and that is on you. Physician, heal thyself. While you were consumed with what the gay community is doing, you're ignoring the very crimes within your own places of faith. My friend William is the son of a minister and is as godly a man as I... No. You would reject him and claim that he lives his life against God's will, but I say, "Look to your own community." Priests and ministers of all kinds have been convicted of all kinds of monstrous behaviors, but they have hidden behind the protections of their church. No wonder so many are rejecting formal religion and seeking spiritual fulfillment elsewhere. Great minds think alike, like the young woman earlier. This amendment only addresses one part of our religious populations, and it definitely excludes me and my faith. Therefore, I ask that if you're going to pass this amendment, it is only fair that those that want to practice a religion of discrimination in this city do so publicly, as it is against my religion to support those that want to discriminate in such a manner. There should be an open records listing of any that want to apply for said religious exemption and a means for us to identify those businesses when we shop. A window clinging stating, "Gay is not welcome here." Religious exemption business, whatever it takes to inform the public and protect us that do not practice that religion when participating in said discrimination. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kevin Gaunt, Gaunt, okay, of Paducah.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commission, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kevin Gaunt, and I'm a pastor at Grace Fellowship Church here in Paducah. I'm here to comment on the fairness ordinance and the proposed amendment. I'm in favor of the amendment, which would protect religious freedoms for those who are principally opposed to having to participate in ordaining or approving same-sex unions. Beyond that, I would like to ask for a repeal of the fairness ordinance passed last year. I don't think it was necessary, since there were already laws on the books prohibiting discrimination, and all the fairness ordinance seemed to do was to elevate sexual orientation to a civil rights status, which I don't believe it is. I don't accept that one sexual behavior is in the same category of a civil rights status. I don't believe this ordinance is necessary, and I would respectfully request an appeal of that fairness ordinance. I have many friends in the LGBTQ community and truly believe that I can keep my biblically based beliefs and my love for all people at the same time. Actually, it is my love for people that drives this view. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak and also for your willingness to serve me and my community by being willing to take on the responsibility of a leadership position in our great city of Paducah. God's grace to you all.
Next up is Mitzi Kirkwood of Paducah. Is she still in here, Mitzi? Oh, hi.
Commissioner, can you help her with the microphone? Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am here tonight to appeal to you not to approve the change in the Human Relations Ordinance. In this day and age, I am sure that all of you know someone who identifies as LGBTQ. Rescinding this ordinance would be sending an exact message to the LGBTQ community that they have no rights as citizens in this community. They are, in effect, merely third-class citizens. Has the past not taught us anything? By rescinding this ordinance, you would be denying a whole community of their inalienable rights as members of this community and as human beings. This would be a clear message that the Commission does not see LGBTQ people as respective members of our city. You would be allowing discrimination and hate into our fair city and would be, in effect, telling all prospective LGBTQ tourists that their money and presence is not wanted in Paducah. You are sending a direct message to LGBTQ youth that they need to be ashamed of who they are and subject to bullying and violence. I implore you to vote no on rescinding this ordinance, and I leave you with this quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "We want all of our rights. We want them here, and we want them now. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Thank you.
Got to put Paducah, or I'm going to say your address.
Don't start yet, because I cannot read too fast because I'm foreign, so accent.
Give it your best shot.
Yeah, all right. My name is Aloha Romei. I'm an immigrant from Venezuela, an American citizen, a therapist, a Christian, and a member of the LGBT community. In 2000, I chose to move to Paducah because I wanted to further my education. Now, 2000... Now, 20 years and two days later, I choose to stay because of the kindness of its people. When the fairness ordinance passed, it not only gave me hope that elected officials listened and understood, but it reaffirmed that I made the right choice to move to Paducah. Some of you may not understand the importance of the fairness ordinance. As a therapist, my job every single day is to instill hope and protect the vulnerable. And unless you belong to a specific minority group, you truly don't understand the impact of discrimination. Four in 10 LGBTQ youth say that their community is not accepting of them. 26% report bullying and not feeling accepted by their families as their biggest problems, while heterosexual youth reports schooling grades. 68% hear negative messages about them from elected leaders. They are at a higher risk of homelessness, assault, trauma, and human trafficking. And most alarming, they are five times more likely to have attempted suicide. How did you even begin to instill hope until a child sitting across from you that it does get better when you're already facing those numbers? Also, as a typical psychology graduate, I couldn't help but question, how can you measure such a subjective construct like sincerely held beliefs reliably? I'm not sure if I'm more offended by the proposed amendment as a gay person or as a Christian. The premise of the LGBTQ community is a threat to Christianity is misleading and insolent. To believe that we as humans have the right to judge other people's sins is arrogant and against God or any supreme being that you choose to worship. My God is a God of love, mercy, and kindness, and ultimately, it is up to Him, or her, to decide whether I'm worthy of His or her compassion and forgiveness. It is not up to my parents, this Commission, and definitely not up to strangers. The message from Romans 14:13 was clear to me. Therefore, let us stop passing judgment on one another. Instead, make up your own mind not to put any stumbling block or obstacle in the way of a brother or a sister. Finally, I am speaking because I am tired of my community and family being used as a pawn for a political agenda, especially by people who do not belong in Paducah. I am tired of having to fight to be treated the same way that heterosexuals. I am tired of having to explain that it is not a choice or mental illness. I am tired of having to demystify the concept of the gay agenda when there's only one thing on it, and that is equality. As John F. Kennedy once said, "Tolerance implies no lack of commitment to one's own beliefs; rather, it condemns the oppression or persecution of others." Thank you.
Next up, we have Sarah and Claire Evans of Jefferson, of Paducah. I knew that part.
So I have been at the meetings the past two times, not the specially called meeting, because I heard of the possibility that the fairness ordinance might be watered down, in my opinion. And first, I'd like to say, I am a Christian, I am a Christian, and I am straight. But even in my own life, I have faced discrimination based on religious beliefs. My husband and I did in vitro, and part of that process was going through counseling to be able to go to the next step. I was told that my children would be an abomination and that the counselor wouldn't see me. This was in Evansville, Indiana. There was nothing for me to do. At the last meeting, we talked about dignity and respect, and we are taking dignity away from LGBTQ individuals by continuing to bring this up, by continuing to not know what we're saying and present it in different ways. We are taking away people's dignity, and it needs to stop.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is my first time ever attending a Paducah Board of Commissioners meeting, and in addressing a large group recently, I quoted as a good example, my cousin, she is my first cousin, I just saw her recently, and her wife, who fought all the way to the Oregon Supreme Court to end same-sex marriage ban and won in 19, sorry, in 2014. I am a proponent of fairness based on race, color, religion, age, familial status, handicap, sex, national origin, gender identity, or sexual orientation. I believe the current ordinance does not protect certain religious views and, in fact, is unfair to several religious groups who are in the city of Paducah. After researching, I believe it must be amended with what Mayor Harless proposed at the May 14 meeting. Thank you for your time.
Leah Wentworth of Old, I never know where this is. Shehan-
Old Shehan Bridge Road.
Oh, I don't know where that is. I'll look it up.
My name is Leah Wentworth. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, and I want to thank Mayor Harless and Commissioner Wilson and the former Commissioners who helped pass the fairness ordinance last year. Choosing to live and work in Paducah, I felt like I had made a good decision and that I was safe to live and work in Paducah when that ordinance was passed. It was very affirming. I've been watching the City Commission over the last couple of weeks. I know I don't often show up in person, but I do very much appreciate that they are streamed online and archived online. I like to keep track of what's going on. In the last couple of weeks, I've noticed a lot of last-minute called meetings and announcements, and that scares me. It's concerning. I do not think the fairness ordinance needs to be amended. I appreciate its existence, and I hope that it continues to keep Paducah a safe place for me and my partner to live and work.
Up next is David Uphold of Paducah. Uphold.
I wear this so that there's no stealth issues, so that everybody knows who I am. My name is David Uphold. I'm the pastor at St. Paul Lutheran Church here in town, and I want to speak tonight in favor of the proposed amendment to the fairness ordinance. I think that the issue that the amendment gives voice to is an important one, and that is the matter of the free exercise of religion. That is a right that is enshrined in our laws, and it is something that has recently come up in many of the court cases that were referenced earlier, especially with Jack Phillips in Colorado. As a Lutheran pastor, I can't help but think of Martin Luther, who said that it is neither right nor safe to act against conscience. In our own times, we can look around our country and see Christian men and women who want to act according to their conscience, but who have been taken to court, publicly maligned, and nearly lost their life's work. Jack Phillips, Blaine Adamson is facing this in Lexington. My point in bringing up these examples is simply to remind us of something that's easily skipped over, easily forgotten, that we must take account of our thoughts, words, and actions, not only in the court of public opinion, but before God. This is what we are trying to do, all of us, I believe. This is what we mean when we speak about living according to our conscience. Both Mr. Phillips and Adamson, and there are many other men and women, show great courage and conviction in how they carry out their business. Right? We're not talking about denying people governmental services or things like that. It's about how a businessman or a businesswoman wishes to carry out their business. In both cases that I mentioned, the court system, well, in Mr. Phillips's case anyways, has recognized the right to conduct that business according to his conscience, even when that means doing something that is largely unpopular. As Christians, we do not confine our religion to our private thoughts, to a single day of the week or a couple of hours in that day. We seek to honor our Lord and Savior and love Him with all our heart, mind, soul, and strength. The Christian that is coerced into using his or her talents in ways that are contrary to Christ's teaching will be forced out of business or to act against conscience. Now, certainly conscience is not infallible, right? A person can be wrong, and so it's necessary that our conscience be guided and grounded in something that is true and certain, something that God has revealed in nature and something that He has especially revealed in Holy Scripture. And so guided by revelation, our conscience is captive to that Word, and Christians have always sought to love our neighbor as Christ commands us. Christians have always been a great example, not always, okay? But Christians have been those who lead the charge in acts of service, mercy, charity, and witness to our Lord Jesus Christ, who comes to bring salvation for all. While we wish to speak the truth in love, Christian love does not rejoice with what is false, but rejoices in the truth. So I speak to you tonight in favor of the amendment, because forcing citizens to act against their conscience, which has been formed by God's Word, is not right or safe. Thank you.
Laura Petrie of Paducah.
Thank you for having me. We just had the Cinema Sisters Film Festival, which is the only all lesbian film festival in the United States, right here in Paducah, Kentucky, this weekend. We had about 200 attendees travel from more than two countries this year. We had filmmakers from Ireland, people from Puerto Rico, Canada, and all over the United States, and this is our fourth year. It's growing. It's doubled in size, and all the women want to do is come here, have peace, watch art, spend their money, and that's what they do. And then they go home, and they feel loved, and they love Paducah. They want to come back. They are coming back. Why would you turn your back on that? Why? Also, we had a two-day filmmaker workshop. The people who came from everywhere on Thursday prefaced to have this workshop, heard about this ordinance in this meeting, and they decided to devote their class and their resources and their time to making a film called The Ordinance. I'm gonna ask each one of you, and Mayor Harless as well, to watch that seven-minute film before you vote, because you owe it to your constituency to see the other side. I grew up in western Kentucky. I live here, I work here, I'm a realtor here. I have an ancillary business of this lesbian film festival, which I'm very proud of. There's nothing wrong with it. And for y'all to make these types of meetings, to keep talking about us, it's really disgraceful. I'm a human. I will go around to every single business down in Lower Town and downtown Paducah to find out who are the merchants who will be discriminating against our attendees, because I'm not gonna let them go into a business that's gonna discriminate them without them knowing it. So I'll be doing that. I will go to each merchant, and I want to know. I agree with some of these people that said, "Put a sign on the door. Tell me you're gonna discriminate against me." Okay? I appreciate you listening. I know you're conflicted. I don't know about you. And this dude over here-
Laura.
Why?
Laura.
Why?
We're not gonna call each other out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I think I have a final one, but Nancy Hughes, did you want to speak about this issue or a different one?
I do.
Okay, come on up then, of Paducah. And this is our final one.
Hello. First of all, I want to say thank you guys for passing this ordinance last year. It has brought, not only, yes, did it send the message to all of Kentucky, all of the nation, saying that we are an LGBTQ-friendly community, it also allowed us, that our members of this community, to feel safe and outspoken and be who we are. Having said that, I wanted to speak to different organizations and the movement that has come along with this fairness ordinance with Paducah. First and foremost is OutPaduka, a newly formed, as of March of this year, nonprofit organization. It is an organization focused on assisting and supporting LGBTQ plus community and youth in Paducah and surrounding areas. The goal is to provide a safe environment for those struggling in the LGBTQ plus community. We have meetings the second and fourth Mondays at the Zone 4, specifically the youth, where they can come, feel welcomed, loved. This isn't just for the LGBTQ kids. These are for kids who have maybe a cousin or a sister or a brother who's struggling. They want to go, and they want to help them, feel loved, support them. We also have all-encompassing, all-welcoming meetings on the first and third Tuesdays. We're on OutPaduka, Facebook, Instagram, look us up, keep up with our meeting locations. The next one is actually this next Tuesday at 5:30, just over here at the McCracken County Library. We also have First Family Church, who started their first sermon was Easter Sunday of this year. It is where all means all, it is an all-inclusive, all-welcoming, all-loving, non-denominational church, where you can come and be you and praise God at the same time. West Kentucky Pride Festival is coming in August at Noble Park, lots of vendors, entertainment, family-friendly, lots of entertainment, lots of fun and games. Come see us there. And then also, we have a 1940's cocktail lounge that is coming to downtown Paducah as well. It is devoted to delivering exceptional experiences by providing a genuine sense of integrity, extraordinary service, and ensured equality. We will strive at creating enduring relationships with gracious hospitality and an intimately elegant, all-inclusive ambiance. Come see us. We're very excited about what this ordinance has done for Paducah, where we can all come, be open, be loving, and feel welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for being here tonight, and thank you for your comments. Thank you for the courage to stand up and share your beliefs. I'm gonna tell you, I'm a little torn right now, because I think that there has been chaos created in our community, and the clarity is lacking. I'm even uncertain what some of you meant. I'm even uncertain if you were talking about Commissioner Abraham's ordinance that he pulled today, or if you were talking about the amendment that I brought up that simply states the state statute. I don't know. And I'm gonna tell you tonight, I'm gonna commit to you that I have done my soul-searching, that the amendment that I brought forward that simply restates state law, because that's how state law works, is something that I did to protect this ordinance. Commissioner Wilson and I are the only two people up here that voted for that fairness ordinance last year, because we believe that protection for all people matters. I was telling someone earlier today that I went to the African-American Museum a couple years ago for the first time, and I'll never forget walking through that museum, realizing that people in the 50s and 60s had to make conscious micro decisions on an everyday basis to make sure that people had their rights. And I promised myself, when I walked out that day, that if I, in this office, at this time, in this place, had the opportunity to protect everyone, that I would take it. Now, let me say, I'm actually a little encouraged that some people that I thought would be against the fairness ordinance in general stood up and said, "I'm okay with the amendment." Because here's the truth, guys, the clear truth, that I have talked to civil rights attorneys, I've talked to everyone I can get my hands on. The truth is that that state statute that's in the amendment that I just put forward is legal regardless if we say it or not. That's the truth, and our community deserves clarity. The clarity is that we're gonna walk out of here today, and I hope we never talk about this again, and I hope that we are committed-
we never talk about this again. And I hope that we are committed to protecting each and every person in this room and in this community. I am finished talking about this. All right. Does anyone else have any comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I want everybody to know that we are not rescinding the fairness ordinance. We're not going to do that. We're simply recognizing that the local level, what has already been passed into law by the Kentucky General Assembly in 2013, as the mayor stated. It just brings about some equity that the U.S. Supreme Court has said in the Colorado case, communities and states must do. It was the better choice of the two options to recognize the rights of both sides. It must be recognized, just as the Supreme Court said, as written by moderate Justice John Paul Stevens in the majority opinion. And an overwhelming majority of emails, and I received an awful lot of emails on this, that I received from the LGBTQ community urged me to vote for the mayor's resolution. I think it is the best choice and the correct decision tonight, and that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
Last year, when we passed the amendment to the Human Rights Ordinance, the reason, I'll restate this, the reason that I voted against it is because, under the Constitution of the United States, everyone in this room, as individuals, are protected. Everyone in this room is protected. It is against the law to discriminate against anyone. So when we started talking about adding language, I'm like, okay, well, we can do a couple of things. We can wait until the high courts rule on it, or if we're going to add language, then as a balance, let's add this language. Over the, Mayor Harless, the amendment that she's bringing, for me, it gives way too much authority on the government side to decide what an individual deems sincerely held. What does that mean to the government? It also talks about unless the government feels that it's too sincere, if it gets in the way of what the government wants to do, then it's not a void. So for me, that, I'm never for an intrusive government like that. Finally, the reason, the reason that I called earlier, the city manager, and asked him to delete the ordinance that I was going to bring, is because of this. It doesn't matter how many laws that we write, that we pass, that we take an oath to uphold. Nothing will ever get settled. No one will ever come to understand anyone else unless we take a personal responsibility to sit across from that person and have a conversation. We have laws on the books, and they don't matter if we can't talk to each other. As a believer, there's not one person in this room that I wouldn't do anything to help. This community, since a year and a half ago, since the fairness ordinance passed, there hasn't been one case here that a person that was discriminated against, that was investigated and brought to fruition. I'm not surprised at that, because the community that we live in are people that love each other. When you talk about the love, and some of the young folks that talked about moving here because they felt loved, I'm not surprised at that. That's the community we live in. So my vote, as far as the amendment coming up, will be a no vote, because I think that gives government too much say-so in what us as individuals believe and feel.
I will say, we passed the fairness ordinance last year. I want us to move forward to talk about how we can get more people to move to Paducah, how we can get more jobs in Paducah, how we can fund a sports park, how we can do the great things that we've done. You heard us talk about the Build Grant tonight. I don't even know why this is coming back up. I know Mayor Harless introduced her amendment, which simply, in my opinion, adds the state statute to our current ordinance. It does not change it. I'm a little conflicted myself by some of the comments that were made tonight about the amendment. I believe there was some confusion between the two amendments. Most of the ones that I've heard have been in favor of what Mayor Harless is doing, or her amendment. It's not what she's doing, it's her amendment that simply adds the state statute, the state law, that you all were part of passing, to our current language.
I do want to be clear also, I think clarity is the word for the night, that if the state, I think I saw the city attorney out there.
He's standing right there.
You don't have to come in. You can pop your head in, Dave. But if the state statute were to change, if we were to wake up one day and be in a Kentucky that doesn't think we have to have a state statute like that, then that means that our local ordinance would change, and it would reflect that. And I think that's important for us. It's important for me to know that my vote tonight to support this amendment is simply to say, we have to follow state law. That's all it is. We have to follow state law. It's not a value decision on my part. In fact, when I left here, the night that Commissioner Abraham brought up his new amendment, and then I read the state language out loud for my amendment, I was uncomfortable, to be honest with you, because I'm uncomfortable that we live in a world where we have to carve out exceptions. And so I just want to make it clear that this is a, again, please, when you walk out of here, it's just stating the state statute. It does nothing. It's neutral for the most part. Actually, it is neutral. I don't even know how to say "most part." It's neutral. And if the state statute changed, then the local law would change. And to me, that's kind of making me wonder if I need to start talking to my state leaders about that, because there might be some adjustments that could be had there. So with that, Commissioner McElroy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I would like to add just a couple things. First of all, I think it's important for us to know that we are all equal. We all have equal dignity, equal respect. We are all loved by our great God. And that's an important thing for us to know, because there has been a lot of hatred from all directions. I would not say two sides, I'd say 45 sides. A lot of different opinions, and there's been a lot of untruth spoke. And I think it's important for us to get back to listening to one another, respecting one another, and realizing we each have value. Everyone has the right to live their life the way they want to live it. That is the country that we live in. The thing I am looking for in an amendment is that when somebody does have a complaint, I hope that never happens, but if they do, I pray that our human rights commissions would look at it honestly and say, is there hatred here, or is there a strong conviction? And we're not talking about basic service here. Everyone should be able to go in and eat and buy and purchase. We're talking about professionals that do creative arts, if they are uncomfortable doing something. And that should be able to be expressed really easily in a civil discussion. As a nurse at the University of Missouri, back in the 1980s, they did therapeutic abortion. There were people who were pro-life like me that did not want to participate in that, and it was handled beautifully. You just signed a paper, and you wrote that that went against your religious beliefs, and people that were willing to do that could fill in there. And I think that if we're respectful and kind, we can have those discussions and not have these difficult situations. I think we can respect one another. It's important that hatred is not tolerated, but religious rights should be respected. If they're not, if we're telling people they only have to keep their religion within their home or their church, we call those people hypocrites, and we don't like those people. So we can't have it both ways. So I would encourage us to respect one another, be kind to one another, and you know, let's start a new day. Let's have a new day where we move forward, and let's get to know somebody that is not like us. Let's have coffee with somebody that we know has different beliefs, and let's listen to one another. And that will make Paducah a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Want to have coffee with me?
Sure, sure.
All right. That's great. Anyone else?
Can we ask Dave Denton?
What do you want to ask him?
This is, this does not change. Our current fairness ordinance stays intact. Correct? I'm just going to ask you that.
Now she wants you at the podium.
No.
Yes, she does. She did this to you last time.
Question.
Ask her again.
I was just asking. Our fairness ordinance in Paducah stays intact.
Oh, yes. Yes, this is simply an amendment to the ordinance.
Amendment to the ordinance. Will you explain that? I think you weren't very clear.
Okay.
We've had this conversation before. I think we had it last year.
One thing we can all agree on is the issue of whether or not to have a fairness ordinance included in the human rights ordinance was decided meetings back, quite some time back. Since that time, there's been a question of should it be strengthened in any way? And you've heard discussions here tonight about how it should be and what it could be, et cetera. In an effort to show a strengthening and following state law, there is an amendment on the floor right now to say, we will put this in an amendment in addition to our ordinance. So the ordinance doesn't change, there's an addition to it. And I agree with what everyone has said about we're following state law, but there's one thing in the ordinance as introduced that says, it is the intent of this commission that the following things be done. And what that is, is sending a message to the court. Do you have any doubt about how to interpret the ordinance that Paducah has? If so, it's the intent to follow the spirit of the state law that you all discussed tonight. It's exactly the same thing. So no, your ordinance, it does not change at all. It has a strengthening, and that is it.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Anyone? All right, ready to call rope?
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Yes. All right. Thank you all so much for being here. All right. If you want an exit, I'm going to give it to you now, if you want to leave. Otherwise, you can stay and hear some really great things about permitting.
Come on. It's really exciting.
No.
It's really good stuff. You'll catch it on the 10 o'clock news, right?
It will be provided in minutes, or I can get it to you tomorrow. I don't have a list right now. I just have the public comment sheets. But I don't have a list made out yet. There will be one made out, but I won't have it tonight. Can I give you a copy after the meeting?
How far are you throwing? Have you been practicing?
I have to, I don't want to give out people's addresses. I understand.
On that nice skirt?
I have to redact it.
Is that what you're doing?
I'm sorry.
Well, good luck to you.
I can't send you a redacted copy of this, or I can make up a list for you that I can send over to you. But I can't give these to you right now.
You missed a civic lesson today, didn't you?
And tomorrow.
You missed a civic lesson today, didn't you?
Happy to do it. I missheard, anyway. It was my fault. All right. All right, we're going to move on.
Commissioner McElroy, I think you have a motion for an introduction.
Wednesday?
You guys are going to have to figure this out afterwards. We have to move on.
I'm gone next week.
All right.
The next week.
Someone grab her motion. Follow her. Commissioner McElroy, you have a motion.
I do. Okay, just a second. I was still on break. Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the ordinance number 2018-06-8537 in title, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky annual operating budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through, is this right?
No.
We referred?
Uh huh.
Yeah, that's right.
Through June 30, 2019, by estimating revenues, okay, and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, ordinance number 2018-06-8537 be amended by the following reappraisal. Transfer $80,000 from the FY 2019 General Fund to the Bob Leeper Bridge Project.
All right. I don't know, I didn't actually get to read the staff report on this, but I do know a lot about it, because I worked with Judge Leeper on this bridge project when he was the judge executive. We did originally commit to $40,000 from the city and the county, and then Four Rivers Nuclear Partnership also committed funds. And of course, we won a grant, $100,000 grant from the state. So the new cost estimate is predicted to go up. I'm going to say all this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. The new cost estimate is predicted to go up a little bit, so we're actually just putting money in the account to make sure we can cover all the costs. But I have talked with Judge Executive Clymer about helping us share that difference. So this is just to get the project going and get us started. And of course, it's the bridge that will connect the Greenway Trail at Stewart Nelson Park with the county walking path that will have extended our trail. So I think it's a great project. I'm looking forward to it. And of course, Judge Leeper, he really did deserve, I think, an honor from our community for his service in public office. Any other questions or comments you want to make about that project? Nope. All right. Ms. Lindsay, you've got a show to put on.
All right. Let me pull up. Okay. So thank you for allowing me the chance to present to the commission. I'm excited about what I'm going to be sharing tonight. So just to give you a little bit of background, back in November of 2018, the city manager asked Fire Chief Steve Kyle, Business Systems Analyst Emma Shaw, and myself to put together a task force to take a look at some of our internal processes, especially those related to permitting, and come up with some recommendations about how we can improve those and make them more business-friendly and user-friendly. So we spent the next several months going through and looking at what our processes are, how we're dealing with the public, getting some good information from internal staff, as well as some people from the outside as well. And we learned that there are three key areas that we really wanted to improve upon, and these are the big overarching areas we wanted to improve, which is communication, consistency, and culture. So we wanted to ask ourselves, kind of, how do we make a long-term impact on the city in these three areas? And so we came up with several initiatives that we brought back to the city manager. And through our conversations with the city manager and Assistant City Manager Smolin, we were able to bring some initiatives that we think are really exciting. So I'm going to share a few of those with you this evening. So the first initiative that I want to talk about is the customer experience. Customer experience is one of our values that we have adopted as a city. And so we wanted to figure out, how do we take that value and turn it into real action? So first of all, what is customer experience? Because you hear this kind of as a buzzword, and it is more used in the private sector. So what is it for us? It's more than customer service. It's actually about dealing with each touch point that a citizen has with the city, and how that shapes their perception of government as a whole. So we are wanting to implement more things based in customer experience. And so some people have asked, you know, why, why does this matter for government? This is something that usually matters more for private business when you're trying to sell something, or something of that nature. But for me, it really impacts us in two different ways. And the first is that the experiences that individuals have with the city impacts how they view our community as a whole. So it is not just impacting how they feel about city government, it impacts how they feel about Paducah. And so we want to broaden the way that we approach this in order to put off a more positive face for our community.
I believe that.
The second reason that... The second reason that we think that it's important to utilize this in local government is because there are actually measurable benefits to it. So, when you make a process easier or make things more easily accessed for our citizens, it means that they utilize them more. So if we have business licensing or if we make it easier to get a permit, it's more likely that people will come in and go through that process with us and do it the right way. So it has benefits to both revenue and infrastructure long-term for the city. Kind of comes back to us, what we put in, we can get out. So I want to talk just a little bit. We decided to do something that's really outside of the box. We decided to create a department dedicated to customer experience. So, they will be, there'll be three people plus myself. That'll be tracking data, doing follow-up. We're going to be getting feedback from citizens. We're going to help improve our processes. And we're going to be assisting with other new initiatives as we go forward. So this is a picture that Interior Designer Jim Smolin actually has been working with us. This is a picture of, mock-up of what our foyer is going to look like. Because we wanted to, we talked about where do we put this department at? And it, we decided that we want it to be the first thing you see when you come in the door.
Wow.
So, this is kind of a basic mock-up of kind of how, what you're going to look at when you come in. And I'm really excited for you to see it. The changes we're going to make are really, I think, going to also round out all the changes we've made to the outside of the building and really complement the atrium as well. So I'm looking forward to you seeing it. So we decided that the mission for the department should be to revolutionize Paducah by placing citizens at the center of every decision. And this, we use this because sometimes we can get caught up thinking, okay, how does this infect us internally, our staff? You know, how, how does this new technology help us? But we kind of wanted to flip the script on that and say, okay, let's design it from the outside in if we're going to design something. So this reminds us that we need to place citizens at the center when we're designing and when we're making decisions. So we do that through several different values. And those are going to be accessible information, fostering empathy, open communication, and then also citizens at the center and supporting journeys. So, as far as accessible information, we don't think that it should be difficult to access government. They should not have to know our organizational structure in order to deal with us. So, we are making sure that information is accessible, accurate, and understandable when we give it to our public. Fostering empathy, we think that the best cities are compassionate cities. And so we are trying to place empathy not only in every interaction that we have, but also in the processes we design and the technology that we implement. And then, open communication, transparency in government is, is important to building community trust. So it's not just about open records and open meetings and the kind of things that we have to do by law, but it's also about implementing user-friendly technologies and creating clear processes to improve how we communicate with our citizens. And then we want to support our citizens' journey. We know that each person is unique, so a big part of what we're going to be doing is some journey mapping, understanding who it is that we, that we are dealing with, what their needs are, and how to best create solutions for them. And then keeping citizens at the center, as I've already kind of talked about, just so we make sure that we're understanding things from their perspective. So, the task force, I kind of merged these two together. The task force, we really focused in on how can we create communication, consistency, and, and cultural shifts, specifically in our permitting process. Permitting is by nature extremely complex and challenging. And I think that in our studies of other cities and what other cities have done to improve this, this is a problem that is faced by almost every city nationwide, is taking this really complex thing and making it user-friendly, making it easily understandable by the public. So, it's, permitting usually spans multiple departments, multiple fields of expertise, multiple code sections, and doesn't have a centralized champion overseeing it. So, I have "Building the New" here because you may have heard the quote, "The secret to change, the secret of change is to focus all your energy, not on fighting the old, but on building the new." And that's kind of the philosophy and the approach that we took when we tried to come up with these solutions. So I'm going to share just a few with you. The first is kickstart meetings. And so we have created an internal review committee that is made up of people from our Fire Prevention Division, people from our Engineering Public Works Department, people from our Planning Department, everybody who has a hand in permitting. And what we want to do is create regular meetings where someone who is starting a project in Paducah could come in and meet with everyone at the same time and get questions answered, have the right people there at the table. And all that they would have to do to be a part of this would just be to call a customer experience representative and get that set up. And that representative would be in charge of their project throughout, making sure that follow-up is happening and making sure that questions are getting answered and making sure that everybody is on the same page. So, we have had our first meeting, just internally with staff to get this rolling. We're having our second one on Friday, and this will be rolling out in July. So we're really excited about it. The second initiative is a users guide. We realized early on that we really needed a roadmap for people to understand permitting, simply because the information is located in a lot of different places and different departments and different pages on our website. And just, so we needed to bring it kind of all together to make it a step-by-step guide for people to be able to refer to and use. So we are in the process of creating this, and we're going to, once we have it completed, we are hoping to do internal cross-training with it so that one department doesn't just know about their process, but they know how their process fits into the bigger whole. And we're hoping that we will have that completed and rolled out to the public by September. And then Certificate of Occupancy Celebrations. This was something that Fire Chief Kyle and Deputy Chief Cherry wanted to implement that we thought was a great idea. And it kind of rounds out what we're trying to do, which is with kickstart meetings, we're here from the beginning. With customer experience and user guide, we're here through your process. And then with Certificate of Occupancy Celebrations, we're basically saying, hey, let's just have an opportunity to just stop and say, "We are proud to have you in Paducah, and we are proud that you were, that you worked with us and, and got to this point with your business." So, that's kind of the, the scope of what we're trying to do there. The last thing that I wanted to talk about is implementing some technology to make this easier. We don't think that technology is always the answer, but it can be used as a tool to kind of update us and, and make it simpler. So the first thing would be Blue Beam, which is, we are, we currently have and are going to be implementing. This is for electronic plan review. So people no longer will have to come into City Hall and hand us physical plans. They will be able to submit all of those online. We will be able to review those internally and make notes across departments concurrently, which is a best practice. The next technology thing that I wanted to go over was Open Counter. And I know you talked a little bit about this in your budget meeting, but I just wanted to go just, just a little bit further. I've, I've told the city manager that Open Counter is kind of like TurboTax for permitting. So, it takes something that's really, really complicated, like tax code or like permitting code, you know, our, our code books and things, and it makes it really simple in a click-through kind of situation. So say you want to start a yoga studio in Paducah. You go in, you type in yoga studio, and then it takes you through a list of questions specifically related to something like that that kind of gives you a better idea of what your permit fees are going to be. When you go on there and you answer some of these questions, there's a zoning map that allows you to see where this is permitted and where it's conditional use. And, and as you answer these questions, those colors change so that you can see where you can put a new business if you're interested in it. And it basically gives you an opportunity to do your research beforehand and get a summary and then be directed to, to start a kickstart meeting so that we can get you in and, and get you started on your projects. This is just kind of the beginning of what we're wanting to do. This is, these are the, just the initiatives that we're launching this year related to this. And we're looking forward to a lot of other things that are going to be coming down the line that we'll be sharing as the time comes. But we're really thankful for the staff that has worked with Chief Kyle and Emma and I to bring us in and, and make us understand a little bit better what we're working with. And we're really thankful for the city manager's office and to the Board of Commissioners for being open-minded and giving us a chance to kind of ask ourselves in a creative way, what can local government look like if we design it with citizens at the center? So, with that being said, what we need now is basically for the community to partner with us. We will be doing an event, which the city manager will tell you more about, but we need the community to partner with us to explore these, while we explore these new initiatives. And, because we're brand-new to this, and we're just starting out. We're just trying something different. So if we can get their feedback, what can we do better? What initiatives would they like to see? We would love to have community involvement and engagement as much as possible to get feedback on this. So, with that, the next slide is from the city manager, and he wants to tell you about something very exciting.
Who picked the song? Just like she said, we're going to, you know, we're going to kickstart the new day a month from today, June 28. And just like that picture we're spinning, we're going to turn customer service on its head. We're looking at customer experience, improving all the services that we do, making sure the decisions we make, just like our values. Every person matters. And making sure that we don't just, we don't, we, we want to come out and make this just a day to remember. The plan is being put in place right now. I've been talking about fireworks, hot air balloons, you know, skydivers, maybe some low-flying jets or military flyovers. But then she asked what the budget was. I said, "We don't have a budget."
Fiscal responsibility is also a value.
It should be, should be a lot of fun. We're going to invite the community out on June 28 to come and visit with us and, and see us and visit with us and just kind of, just realize a change has occurred. And that that's going to be the, the big kickoff. And it's what we're calling it, the New Day Initiative. I'm very proud of that. I'm excited about that.
And I wish the people would have stayed.
I was going to say, we should have done this at the beginning. And I think it's also important to, to say that you are doing this with current staff that you're transferring.
Yes.
You're not adding, when you say a new department, you're not adding new staff.
Right. Utilizing the current staffing levels that we have.
I just want to say, thank you so much. I'm looking at the three in the back that worked so hard on this, and you. And when you say the word journey mapping, it makes me so happy. I, thank you all so much. This, this is so exciting to me. And when, I love your phrase, "What can government look like when the citizen is at the center?" Just to think that that culture is being flipped on its head. I just, thank you guys so much, seriously. You listened, you dove in. And, you know, you could have easily just been like, no, everything's just okay the way it is. And you didn't say that. Thank you so much. It's so awesome. I'm so excited.
It's super exciting. If you've ever run for office, you have heard complaints about city government. And so I think it's exciting that we are turning things upside down. And I also want to challenge you that when you hear people complain, say, "When were you in City Hall last?" You know, because people hang on to stories for years, and years, and years, and years. Challenge people to go back to City Hall, walk, don't mail your taxes in, come in and pay, face-to-face, and experience City Hall on your own. Almost makes you want to open a business.
Well, yeah, right.
So go, now's the time.
I just want to say, I think this is brilliant, and I appreciate all the hard work that y'all put into it. And you are right on it. We've been, you know, we should have done it 40 years ago, but we're doing it now. And thank God, this is, it's a new day, and I think the public's going to absolutely love it. And this is, keeping with that theme of job creation and more business for the community.
All right. You got a scoop right now.
This is it right here. This is how you make it work. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I think this is great because we've all experienced poor customer service. We've been on the other end of that. So when we talk about great customer service and just creating an environment where folks come in and they go and tell like nine people, "It used to be this way. Now it's changed." So that's, that's exciting to me. How can we help you get your business open? That's, that's what I hear from that presentation. That's good stuff.
Very exciting. Great job. Good job.
I like this discussion item, by the way, on the meeting agenda. Thank you for adding that. That's really helpful. Yes. Do you have any comments you'd like to make tonight?
Just to kind of go with that same theme, Paducah's alive. The summer, summer activities have started. There's a slew of activities started last week, more are starting this week. Of course, the Transit Boadock was up and running last week, and we had a lot of traffic coming in over the weekend. We had the pool open up. We have the Summer Concert Series kickoff two weeks from now, week and a half from now, actually, now. Farmers Market's been up and running for a couple of weeks. Paducah Chiefs home opener this Friday night. So, Kim and I are going through our, our schedule, making out of all our activities. And if you're bored, it's your fault. Paducah is alive for summer, and I'm looking forward to it.
That's awesome. Any other comments from the commissioners tonight? We have one more public comment. Mary Ann Evers waited around to talk about the stormwater as well. So you can come on up if you'd like to.
Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak. I have emailed each commissioner and our mayor about this, but I wanted to hit the highlights at the meeting. I know full well how dangerous and scary stormwaters in our area can be. For five years, I lived on Buckner Lake Circle and experienced firsthand how often and how fiercely the stormwaters rose around me to the point that I worried many times for my personal safety. Stormwaters have caused much damage, much damage, to my, and loss of my personal effects. On at least one occasion, I honestly feared for my life as, when I lived on Buckner Lake Circle, as the stormwaters were everywhere around me, and I could not get out of my home for a long time, like an hour or two, maybe even. It was flash flooding. In my current home on Buckner Lane, stormwaters have damaged my yard and threatened to damage my house. The stormwaters flow across Buckner Lane and across South Country Club. I'm at the corner of the two. And on to and across the full length of my personal property, across one side and then across the other side. I contacted the City of Paducah. No one would authorize a fix to the problem. Since I have notable arthritis, I just had a hip replacement, but I'm only 52. I cannot do the work myself, and I had to pay several thousands of dollars to have an independent source, local company, try to repair and contain the stormwaters. Only last week, that independent source came back out for the third time to try again, because it's still happening, to further the repair and contain the stormwaters. And I'm not sure if the battle is over yet. We shall see when we have a really hard rain. I am opposed to Paducah's stormwater infrastructure fee. Probably not what you expected me to say there. But I support correcting Paducah's stormwater infrastructure problems. I believe the fee is a deterrent to business. I believe our fees or taxes, which I believe them to be, are, are too high already. As a fiscally responsible adult, I monitor my household budget regularly, at least once a month, and carefully. When a true financial problem arises, I make cuts in other areas of my budget in order to have funds pay for the problem. I don't push to create more funds, but rather I look within my current funds to resolve the issue. And I ask that you do the same thing with Paducah's stormwater infrastructure fee. Realizing as a public school employee that, I am a teacher, that probably me, my pension and, and the pension of many of, of the, of city and county and state employees is the problem. So, I say, I mentioned today in an email to one of you, I'm considering telling it to Frankfurt even. I'm speaking up tonight here, and I'm considering telling it to Frankfurt. Get rid of it for new hires. Get it out of there. I'm even willing to go as far as to say, "Take all retirement that the city would have to contribute to, county, boards of education, state, all of it. Take it out of there." to contribute to, county, boards of education, state, all of it, take it out of there. If businesses can't afford to do it, why in the world do we think that we can, as our cities, counties, boards of education, and state can do that? Thank you, I appreciate your consideration, and we're getting ready to go out of town in a little bit, for 10 days, and I'm afraid I'll miss the vote, so I wanted to speak tonight, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, really, thank you. All right, with that, we do not have executive sessions, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.